Welcome to the July 21 city Clean City Commission meeting. Can we get a roll call, please?
Chairperson Woods.
Present.
Vice Chair Ober.
Present.
Commissioner Russell.
Present.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Commissioner Hollins.
Here.
Commissioner Case.
Present.
Commissioner Bowman.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So our first order is the approval of minutes, consideration of minutes for approval, consideration of the Clean City Commission's June 16, 2022, regular meeting minutes as written or with noted corrections.
I make a move, we accept a minutes.
I'm Kathy Bowman. I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Next item, consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the Clean City Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time pursuant to ARS 38431 at all.
I did not receive any public comments.
Thank you. So we will move on to our reports. First listed is the Community Recognition Award. Would you like for me to continue, or do you want to take away with that?
I can go with that.
All right, thank you.
Chair, vice chair, members of the commission, Portia Kepke had been nominated for a Community Recognition Award. She has organized her friends and fellow high school students to gather to clean up different areas around town. She is here today, so I don't know if I was going to invite her and her family up and maybe all of you could come down and we could take a picture and.
Great.
Present her with her award. Just right in the middle on the front would be great. Vice Chair Ober, I don't know if you had anything else you'd like to say.
Sure. I can flatter enough everybody in here. What I like to do is read to you what the nomination actually says. Does the City of Kingman and the Clean City Commission recognize the need and the desirability of litter free? This program has been established to reward community organizations as well as private businesses for outstanding efforts. Have that. The award actually states for their outstanding support and friends for their outstanding efforts in helping families and parents.
Thanks.
Is that next? Was that?
Take a camera.
She's doing good today.
We'll start at the end here. Same way.
She's doing good today. She got a trip today to school.
I can have a photo op.
Yep. Wait, 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 my turn. Thank you. One, two, three.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Everything good? Let's hope you're doing anything.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. That's cool. You're trying to get that one away. No, that was on the mirror. Oh, okay.
And Portia, I just want to say thank you very much. It's quite refreshing to see a young individual with, you know, so much compassion and wanting to do more for the environment. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Well, none of our next business is going to be this much fun, but. So number four listed is our old business and we're going to go with A, our event calendar. Discussion and possible action regarding the Clean City Commission's event calendar.
Chair, vice chair, members of the commission. We have scheduled a cleanup, the city managers, management team cleanup will be on September 8, 2022, beginning at 8:30. That'll be our usual spot from Bash's down past Maverick and if time permits, down to Public Works. We'll be starting at 8:30 a.m. for that one. We did receive communication from River Cities United Way. They are looking to schedule a fall Kingman Day of Caring. They were talking about late in September, but I don't have an official date or time for that. We'll continue as our staff to coordinate with them and let you know what gets scheduled and where we might be that day. At some previous meetings, we've had some discussion about doing another fall cleanup. Couple dates that have been identified were the 22nd and 28th. I think those are both Saturdays, but I haven't looked at the calendar lately. One's a Saturday and one's a Friday.
Friday.
But we could definitely look at both of those on Saturdays. We are getting into some special events. There are some through October. Generally at the end of October, beginning of November, that kind of slows down a little bit, but it also starts getting a little bit colder and blustier out there too, so. We can continue to work on that and we'll report back. You know, I think with, and we'll talk about this in greater detail later, but moving to quarterly meetings, we'll probably be communicating a lot more through emails and so as we get things scheduled or start developing some of these, we'll be reaching out for input on those. And that's all I had for this month.
Rob, I have a question. You really meant to have it on a Saturday and a Friday, right? Pick one of those two dates, right, that's available?
Well, you know, we've had discussions before that, you know, I think some commissioners have said a Saturday would work better for them, you know, if they're working. Fridays, Thursdays work a little bit better for us because we got staff.
Okay, got it.
On the clock, so I guess, you know, we're open for, open for discussion on that front, but. And that's all I had on that. Try to answer any questions if you might have any.
I just have a comment with the cleanup in October. If you went with the, either the 28th or the 29th. I guess when I first read it, I thought it was both Saturdays, but with the second one or the last weekend being, you know, Halloween, there might be a lot of other different things going on.
That's true.
And with our new schedule that I saw as well, I think the first date that you listed, the 22nd, would probably work well and it would be nice to lock that in so we can tell people instead of deciding in our next meeting in October.
Well, like I say, we can, we can work to finalize that and communicate with you.
Okay.
Before that meeting.
Any other comments?
Maybe we should do it after Halloween. Pick up all the candy wrappers.
But there's never usually much on Beale Street. We clean it up afterwards.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to letter B, Community Outreach and Education. Discussion and possible action regarding community outreach and education.
Chair, vice chair, members of the commission, we didn't have a presentation for you this month because of the award presentation. We had originally planned to have the county staff here to talk about their low impact development guidelines. That was supposed to be next month, but now that we're rescheduling things, I will need to coordinate with them to see if they would be available in October. Some of the other presentations we had talked about was maybe reviewing some of the ADQ videos on reducing or using. There'd been some discussion about the Garden Club and Dig It. I mean, we can reach out to them. I don't know if they would be. I mean, they have activities both in the fall and in the spring. I think those are their, you know, busy times. So I mean, we could coordinate that where we have one of them in the fall and one in the spring, but. Those are kind of what we've got lined up and we'll continue to try to get some of those scheduled. And again, just a reminder, if you have any suggestions, please feel free to email Donna and I.
I did reach out to my contact at the Garden Club, the Serbatic Garden Club, and they are, they have a board meeting next week and they said they will decide, vote however they get that approved. So I will follow up with that. That was kind of prior the new schedule, so.
Yeah, there'll be some readjusting.
Yes, but I will let you know what they decide.
Okay. And Chair Woods, it sounds like your microphone's on, but it's, I'm not hearing you real strong, so. And I know if, when, when you look at these, these videos online, it's really, you know, if you could, sometimes you can hear people in the room when you're with them, but you can't hear it on the videos at all, so.
Want me to yell at you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Please.
All right. Anything else on the outreach from the commissioners? All right, we're going to move on to C, Community Recognition Program. Do we want to go through that, or?
Well, I can, first I'll start by apologizing for not being there, but I'm glad, I'm glad everything went off without a hitch. But as I wasn't there, I guess I would defer to the chair, the vice chair on the proceedings that day.
Commissioner Ober.
Yes, from, everybody enjoyed it. It went off really well. Both companies really appreciated their awards. Haven't seen anything in the newspapers yet, but I know Colleen was there and she took lots of pictures and. Yeah, Rotary Club was excited, New Core was excited and it worked out really well underneath the arch. Seemed to be a really nice spot for it.
Good.
Of course, the room is nice too, but getting them here is sometimes difficult, but anyway, anybody else?
You didn't have to wait on any hot rods or?
No. Maybe just one, one car. When we started walking over, we waited and then they left and we.
There were a few. We took turns taking pictures.
Yeah.
For the tourists.
We were taking, yeah, Mike was taking pictures for the tourists, yeah. Anyway, went out really nice. It was really, yeah.
Good.
I'm not 100% sure, but I believe there was an article in the paper of the Rotary Club receiving the recognition award, but it wasn't at, from the event that we put on, so.
Yeah, I emailed Colleen to find out where that picture came from, but I think the Rotary Club in their building took their own picture and they must know someone at the standard and they took it over there and.
Oh.
Got it put in, but the ones Colleen has done in the past, that hasn't shown up yet in any type of newspapers.
Well, generally, yeah, they're put on Facebook and then it's distributed to the newspaper.
Right, right.
Well, good. I'm glad that my A-team was able to take care of you guys.
I liked in the agenda that they added a page about the like specs of the program. Just a little, you know, a little bit about it. I thought that was nice.
Well, and, yeah, and we've got that for the next few items. I guess we can talk about that a little bit now, but. After the last meeting, I talked to a couple of you about, you know, some of this outreach that we're planning on doing, going out and talking to service organizations and such. And, and somebody made a good point that, you know, it'd be nice to have some talking points to go when you go to these groups so that everybody's kind of saying the same thing and. So Donna, in her, you know, thoroughness, has prepared some draft talking points for like the next three items. So as we go through, if we could, if you just, I don't think we need to go through them in detail, but if there's anything in there that you don't think is clear or contradicts something else or, you know, please, please let us know or if you have any suggestions for ways that we can expand on that so that, you know, as we're all going out to talk about, you know, this program and the other programs, that we're all relaying the same information. And, you know, that's, in our business, it's real important that we try to be as clear as possible because people hear different things, so. So thank you for pointing that out.
All right, next item is D, Kingman Helping Hands Project. And this one is discussion and possible action regarding the next steps in implementing the Kingman Helping Hands Project and review of information document for changes or suggestions.
Commissioners, again, this is the same kind of thing. We've got these talking points. We're looking for any input that you may have on these. We did, we have our, the contact list that Donna's developed. We also have kind of a new contact list that we were fortunate enough to get from Lisa, Lisa Lewis, our, out of our airport staff and economic development staff. For some of the service organizations, we'll update our list, but as we're doing that, I'd like to try to clarify and maybe incorporate any input that you have on these talking points. Again, with the idea that we're being consistent when we're going out to different groups and preaching the same message.
I know in some of our previous meetings, we had, there was some confusion or talk and I'm not sure if you could just specify, do we have a list of specific churches?
We do. I think it was included in the packet, not today's, but maybe at a previous meeting.
Could you please have Donna or you or, I'm not sure how long she's incognito, but someone to send out a refreshed list if possible? That'd be great.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Do we have the brochures printed and can we get them?
We have the brochure finalized, I believe, so I think we're, we're ready to print those. I guess this was the other piece that I didn't think of until I think Commissioner Carpenter asked me about it after the last meeting of, you know, having something to speak from when you go, so. Yeah, I think we can get this done. We'll have the brochure and we'll have the compiled list and we can start divvying those up amongst ourselves and start making rounds a little bit.
Okay, if you can let us know when all that's ready, we can stop by or something and pick them up and figure out what we're going to do.
Yeah, and we can, you know, we can provide the, you know, we have quite a bit of walk-in traffic here at Utility Building. We can provide those up there and some of our other offices are a little bit higher traffic, you know.
Great.
So we can definitely provide those there.
Any other comments? All right, moving right on to letter E, our Adopt a Block update. Update, discussion and possible action regarding the Clean City Commission's Adopt a Block program and review of information document for changes or suggestions.
Commissioners, we did have a couple businesses reach out to us. Dutch Brothers has reached out to us about the Adopt a Block. Starbucks also, I guess they were more interested in adopting a park, so they were directed to parks and I believe that's been, that's been completed. And again, and so we have the list of the active permits and again, we have these, these talking points. And I guess that's, you know, we can maybe talk about that, maybe clarify that next month, but depending on what the commissioners are comfortable with, if we're going to an organization, you know, to talk about one program, well, we got three programs to promote, so I think we could probably cover all of those without taking up, you know, two hours of their time at whatever their, whatever their meeting is, so. Again, we have these talking points and we're looking for any inputs on, on those.
Well, my personal belief is when we go to talk to different organizations or businesses, we should focus in one area. For example, Commissioner Woods and I went in June, was it May or June? And talked to about 17 different businesses and apparently two of them have contacted you. But those were businesses and I think, you know, they're geared more towards the Adopt a Block program. We're talking to the churches. We go to them, we should talk about the Community Helping Hands Project. I think of just, you know, because otherwise you get overwhelming because even when we were talking to them, just about one subject, you could tell by their eyes that.
Yeah, and I can, I can see the logic of that. I guess it's whatever you're comfortable with, you know.
Yeah.
But to your point, I mean, you want to, we want to make sure the information's clear and concise.
Correct.
If we can accomplish that, talking about more than one of them, that's great, you know, but. Yeah, it may be more appropriate to focus on one or another, depending on how much time you have or, or whatever other factors may come in.
So there's a couple of elements to it, right? There's looking for the right candidate that needs the help and then for businesses to pitch in with maybe help or material or whatever, right?
Yeah, and I think, you know, like I know Mr. Oberg has in the past, I think those business contacts are going to be, or like Chair Woods and Commissioner Case have in the past, I think those contacts on the business side are going to be more one-on-one to where, you know, when you go talk to Rotary, you're going to be talking to the group or whoever that is, so, yeah. But you're right. I think the message is. But you're right, I think the, the message is focused, I think we give a general description of the program and then why we're bothering them, right, I mean, that's what we need to let them know, so.
And a lot of the businesses we went into were very, customers were, you know, coming in and so it, it was like get in, make your point, get out, here's our paper, you know, call us.
It's a tough duty and we appreciate it, yes.
But, you know, sometimes it's, you know, the people that are in there buying something or getting something that hear about it that they're interested about it as well, so we did have, you know, both of that too. So sometimes it's just, you know, getting the word out to whomever. And two out of seventeen, well, it's a start, that's two more.
Well, if you're playing baseball, that's not bad.
Eighty twenty rule.
All right, any other comments? All right, moving on to item F, Boards and Commissions Ordinance Update. Update regarding the Boards and Commissions Ordinance Changes Recently Approved by the City Council. This is an information-only item.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the commission. Again, Donna's drafted a wonderful little summary of what council approved. We'll be going to quarterly meetings. It's hoped that we'll be able to, since we're doing them quarterly, it's hoped that we'd be able to start those at five o'clock and that just makes it a little bit easier for our IT staff when they have multiple night meetings every, every, every week. There is a residency requirement, I've reached out to the city attorney and so I'll follow up with him on, on what that means for sitting members who are not city residents. So I don't have that clarification tonight. Terms were changed to four years, eligible for, eligible to serve two terms concurrently. Terms are now, and on the even years, a lot of this is just to kind of help us with the housekeeping part on our side. So we'll be going to quarterly, so there's the new terms and so our meetings will be January, April, July and October. So our next, our final meeting of the year would be in October. The ordinance approving the changes is attached. I think that's, those are the high points, but I'll try to answer any questions if you have them.
I had one question, say if you serve a full eight years or whatever, could you sign up for a different commission afterwards?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
On our quarterly meetings, will that start in January or is that starting immediately? To our next meeting would be in October.
Yes, sir, our next meeting would be in October.
Okay. So in the meantime, we'll just call you or Donna for things that's going on out there and?
Yeah, and like I say, I think we'll be doing more updates through emails. And so it'll just be more important to remember the basics, you know, that open meeting law training, you know, we don't reply all to everything, to anything, because that kind of creates a quasi-meeting and but we'll have housekeeping matters to address, you know, we'll, we'll be scheduling activities, we'll be asking for input on things and we want your input, but please just try to keep it a simple, you know, between me and Donna and yourselves and not, not, not form any quorum, yeah.
Right, right.
In the event of something special coming up, could a special meeting be called in between the quarterly meetings?
Yes, sir, if there, if there was a need for a special meeting.
So I noticed there was quite a few changes, reading through the ordinance, because I know when I filled out an application eons ago, it seems like now, but really it was just before COVID. There was a, a spot on the form that asked if you were interested in doing other commissions or boards and did I read that correct, so now it's one person, one board at a time?
Yes, well, generally that's the way it's been. You couldn't serve on more than one commission unless it was, there's a couple, there's a couple of commissions that only re, only meet when they're called, there's the Building Board of Appeals Commissions, that's, that's only when there's an appeal to a building code issue. There's the, you know, Planning and Zoning has a, a special commission that really only meets to review variance requests and those happen every two or three years, so. You could be on one of those in a regular commission, but you couldn't be on two regular commissions, if that makes sense. But a lot, a lot of those forms are being updated, the application form and, and I don't know if, but generally the city clerk's gonna start administering some of this, so you, I think most of you will be receiving a letter from her about the change to your terms and, and meeting dates and all those things too.
Okay. Okay, Rob, since October will be the last meeting this year and some of the commissioners won't be eligible for, for reappointment, are they, is the department gonna start looking for new replacements for the January meeting? Or do we, are we gonna wait till January because we'll be short several people?
No, under, part of the new revisions is that every month, the city's going to publish a list of vacancies for commissions. So after that October meeting, you know, we would be listing the positions that would become vacated on the Clean City Commission. So they'll be, they'll be advertising that through their Facebook and other media outlets to try to attract some applicants for those positions. Now, if, I don't think it's, in the past, it got a little bit, you know, if we had people that went off and we didn't have enough applicants to, to fill those spots, those people could stay on until we had that. I don't think that's gonna happen right away with us this time, but so for all practical purposes, you know, if this is your second term, then October would be your last meeting and then, you know, then we would be advertising for new applicants for that, for those vacant positions. And then our first meeting in January, we would go through and do the officer, you know, we picked the chair and the vice chair and we'd seat our new members and probably go through and do our orientation presentation and, and, and all that. Open meeting law and all that stuff, yeah.
So to be clear, we're not having meetings next month or September?
No, sir.
Okay, October.
So my comment, and it's just a comment, that the quarterly meetings, when I first started coming to meetings, there was a terrible time trying to get a quorum and it shocked me, there was actually seven positions since it never was filled, I mean, just this year filled the seven. So I was kind of disheartened that, you know, you're going now back to four times a year. I think, I think the commission was gearing up to do great things and when you now start pulling everybody apart and relying on digital contact, I think that may have a, an effect, I, I hope I'm wrong. Because we are moving into the digital age. But I just, I hope that the commission is able to have great communication and continue with all the programs.
And I understand your comment, Commissioner Chairman. You know, one thing as we, as we're working through this, like I said, we will be communicating more through email. But if you have any suggestions on how we can make sure that we're all still communicating as good as we can, as well as we can, we're definitely open for that kind of input too. So.
So for instance, when you get the talking points together for these programs, you're just gonna email them out and are we gonna decide who goes where or what, or how's that all gonna work out?
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah.
Yeah, gotta coordinate.
That's what we'll be doing and so we'll be emailing, or we'll be sending those out, make sure everybody's okay with it and everything's clear. And then we'll be coordinating with, you know, most of you on an individual basis or, or, you know, one or two of you on scheduling who's going where and keeping, we'll keep track of it. You know, there, there is other technology out there.
I was thinking once in a while, we may need to huddle up, you know, like a team, you know, and get, get on the right track or whatever.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be new for us too.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, like I say, we're, you know, I mean, we're confident that we can do it, but any, any input or thoughts on how to improve how we're communicating with you between meetings, we're, we're wide open for it, so. I mean, we, you know, we have as much invested in these programs. Well, you know, we have a lot invested in these programs, just like you do and, you know, we want those, we want them to succeed and so we're open for any, any kind of input on that process.
I've got just a comment too, going off what Teresa was saying. Being that when we're here in the chambers, you know, we have a lot better live interaction with each other, real time interaction. Doing it this new way, we're not gonna have that. Don't think that's very big bill, we get the vote on it, but hopefully it works out.
Well, we could all exchange phone numbers.
Oh, you.
Yeah, you gotta watch, you gotta watch that.
Open meeting.
I mean, you can do that, but you gotta.
I knew that, but I would. This is America.
You can't.
Any other comments about the changes?
So when we have a, I have project for the Helping Hands Project, you gotta send out emails to us and let us know so we can participate?
Yes, sir, and you know, and we do do, just like we did, whenever we do a special event, we, those are all posted so that, you know, if we have four or five of you show up at a special event, that's fine. That's covered under a generic posting that the city clerk does. You know, we, because we're not there to talk about, you know, the business of the commission, we're there to do something, you know.
I know they had a, if I have one there, you can go to the city site and, and find the application for the Helping Hands Project, but I couldn't find that yet.
Well, we'll make sure that we've got all that stuff squared away, I think, you know, we'll probably include kind of this, this talking point information along with the, you know, as part of the program summary, it'll be incorporated with all of that, so.
Great, thanks. I got one other little question, if, at one of our cleanups, it falls between our, our quarterly meeting times and it's posted and we all get together, there's obviously a quorum of commissioners there. Can subjects be discussed at a cleanup or does it have to be actually a, an agenda posted as to what we're, if, if we decide we want to talk about something, how would we be affecting the open meeting laws there?
Well, we wouldn't be talking about something.
You can't, when you're on a cleanup, you're on a cleanup and you can't discuss.
We're there to pick up trash or we're there to
Yeah, okay.
Talk about this program or that program.
We couldn't go off and have a beer and talk about something, okay.
Two if you can.
You know, it'd be like any normal, if you wanted to call somebody, you could call one person, but you couldn't call four people.
Being that it was posted that we're all gonna be together and we have a quorum, that would it, would it be against open meeting laws to discuss anything, it's something like that?
Well, it would be, because generally, because we'd have to take minutes.
That's right.
We'd have to do all that stuff that we wouldn't be able to do in that, because I'm gonna be busy picking up trash, so.
It's just gonna be harder to be a team when you spread out the meetings, that's my comment.
Well, it's, it's different, you know, I mean, this is something that we all went through with the pandemic, you know, I mean,
Changes.
You know, we would have our team meetings, you know, frequently and we'd have, you know, thirty people in a room, forty people in a room and you, you just have to find other ways to do these things, sometimes they're, sometimes they're not as good, sometimes, sometimes they are, so.
So what's the goal of doing quarterly instead of monthly?
Well, it, it, a lot of it goes back to what you talked about earlier, you know, the, this commission's been great on attendance, most of them are not. Originally, there had been some discussion about going down to five members because we have, you know, we have commissions. Some commissions have to make recommendations to council on, you know, water service request or subdivisions or whatever it be. You know, it's not really fair that, that, you know, we've got people trying to do business with the city that have to work with the commission and they're coming back for four months because that commission can't achieve a quorum. So that was a part of it, like I say, we've had that issue with the Clean City Commission before, but not, not really, you know, you all are a pretty dedicated bunch, but, and then just the other part of it, it is a lot of work and you know, most of our departments and divisions are pretty minimally staffed when it comes to, you know, administrative personnel and so hopefully, hopefully we can, like I say, we can work through this process and make sure that we're doing the best we can to keep things moving in a timely manner and we're doing our best to communicate with you and, and keep you informed of what we're doing.
And the other comment that, when I first started coming in the chairs, we would see our city council person here in that corner a lot. I know they change like every year, just like everybody else. I don't think I've seen one since that change.
Nope.
Well, we've had, I don't think Councilmember Walker's on this meeting tonight, but he has been zooming into this meeting to where he's been attending through Zoom. We have had liaisons who didn't come and, and frankly, that's, that issue's above my pay grade. They don't work for me, so.
No, it just would be nice if they're here, then they could take all of our comments sometimes, you know, because I know you do as well, but it would be nice if you actually had an ear to them as what's going on.
And again, coming January, we'll have a new liaison too, so those, those will be rotating every, every year.
And especially since it's only gonna be four times a year, shouldn't be a problem now.
Or when they zoom, just say hello, so we know that there's actually someone there listening, would be nice. That's all the complaints that I have about it.
I, I would say if they're going to be appointed to attend the meeting for whatever thing that they're doing, they could at least show up, I mean, either that or do away with the, the thing and don't waste the time of appointing somebody and I think we're all expected to show up, they should too.
I have a question also, when, none of them's ever showed up since, I don't think Teresa and I've been here, but if they do show up, as we direct questions like we do to you on and off, Rob, can we direct questions to them? Or are they just here as a listening here?
They're, they're primarily here to observe. You know, I, I think there are times you can interact with them, but you know, I don't think, you know, I think asking input's fine, I think any kind of direction is probably not appropriate, you know, but primarily they're here to observe and they may have questions of, of staff. And they may have questions of, of staff or, or of you, you know, especially if you're out, you know, talking to people about this, that, or the other thing. But, yeah, it's primarily for them to observe and, and report back to council.
I know, I know they had, it was even in the paper about the, some of the commissions not having enough people to show up to have a quorum and stuff like that. And then the city people don't show up and it's like, what do you expect? You know, they're not setting an example for the, for the people, so...
The city people, like me?
No, no.
I've missed two meetings in 30 years.
Sometimes you show up too often. The city council people.
Again, it's a little different.
You're, you're one of the worker guys.
Diana sat in on Zoom a couple of times when she made comments, but that's the last time I remember.
Yeah, I thought, I thought she had too. I remember seeing her on the screen. Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll be moving on to number five. Announcements by commission members. Limited to announcements, availability, attendance at conferences and seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings. And we will start with Commissioner Russell.
Well, being that October will be my last meeting, I have reached the limits on my term after nine years of this. So I, I, I just think the champagne and caviar ought to be in order. Or a tank of gas, whichever's the cheapest.
All right. Commissioner Bowman.
No comment.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Well, I'm still pretty new here and I like the team, you know, and I liked it. I'm kind of sad that it's going every quarterly or whatever, but I like the culture of Kingman and I, I wanted to be a part of keeping that, you know? So we'll be more diligent, even though we won't be meeting every month. But, you know, and we can't talk to each other. That's kind of weird. But anyway, that's all I have to say.
All right. Commissioner Hollins.
I have nothing.
Commissioner Oberg.
Not, nothing.
And Commissioner Case.
Not a thing tonight.
And no comments for me or announcements, so that should be everything. I will entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
And I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a third. We have a motion, a second, and a third. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.